Good evening and welcome to the September 16th Meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I please have a roll call?
Yes, good evening for roll call. Chair Hauser?
Here.
Vice Chair Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Berman?
Present.
Commissioner Devine?
Present.
Commissioner Godwin?
Present.
Commissioner Redfield?
Present.
Commissioner Wright?
Present.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Berman, can you lead us in a salute to the block, please?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me.
Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on any item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to comment or oral communications for items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom or by the dial and options shown on the screen. Once dialed in, enter the conference number 811-561-58241 and press the pound key. Once I announce the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to speak, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone or the raised hand function in Zoom. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, the chair will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Okay. So that brings us to approval of the order of agenda. And actually, first, I should ask if we have public comments on administrative business? I do not have any in front of me. Are there any on Zoom raised hands for the administrative business?
Chair, it looks like we have one raised hand.
Okay.
Cliff Lawrence, you may unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to be here for the administrative part. I was anticipating the next one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, I will close public comments on the administrative business, and I will ask if someone wants to approve the order of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as noted.
Second.
All right, please vote. That motion passes. Okay. And that will take us to the approval of minutes of March 18th, May 20th, and August 19th. Does anyone have comments? I do have comments.
I have a few.
Okay. Please go ahead and start, Commissioner Berman.
Mine start on packet page 75. This is today's packet. One, two, three. Fourth paragraph down, first sentence where I talk about my baby. Not sure if it's relevant. Could be removed. If we don't want to remove it, that's fine. Packet page 79. The big, long paragraph, it's the last paragraph, on line eight. The word "lock," I think it's supposed to be "take."
It's supposed to be what?
"Take." So the sentence is... Where is the start of the sentence? So we don't have a specific plan developed by year three of this timeline, which doesn't start now, probably starts three years from now. There is a loophole through this where the project could take eight years. I think the system that probably generates these minutes replaced it with the word "lock," which I think is a typo. Packet page 81, and this may have been one of Chair Hauser's comments. The third paragraph down, Chair Hauser stated that each person should have whatever, and then I think there's more to that sentence, so something like whatever they need, but I'll defer to Chair Hauser. Then two paragraphs down from that. It states, Commissioner Berman stated that her first question is, "What would the truck trips per day be if they added a condition at this time?" Then I don't know if people remember, the lights went out in the chambers, and I joked and said, "Oh, everyone wants to go home. I guess they don't want to hear the rest." That was definitely a joke, so I don't know if it's worthwhile to say, like, "The lights went out in council chambers," or maybe we just delete that last sentence. Then packet page 82. The fourth paragraph from the bottom. I think the word "cycle" should be replaced with "in a circle." And then packet page 90. There is a sentence that got jumbled up, and maybe I was speaking gibberish at 11:00 PM, but I think the sentence is supposed to be... So this is the first paragraph. The second to last sentence. I think the sentence is supposed to read, "Her understanding is that the fill alternative does not propose a three-to-one slope, but proposes a two-to-one between the limits of fill area, which they call pad elevations, and starts at elevation 135, then slopes at a two-to-one to elevation 85." Then packet page 92. First sentence, Commissioner Berman questioned if it doesn't matter that it is a zero-to-five vote. I think that's what it's supposed to say, because it was a question, not a statement. And then, lastly, packet page 94. In the motion, I believe, and maybe staff can just verify later once the minutes get finalized, but the specific plan number, I think it's supposed to be SP17922 when it states SP17822, but that might need to be verified, and that's all I have.
Does anyone else have comments on the minutes? Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I've just got a couple. On notes on May 20th, page 15 of 28, the document states that Chair Hauser assumed no Fishers, and Fishers is spelt P-H-I-S-H-E-R-S, which is a website construct. I believe that's supposed to be a Fisher in the rock, which is F-I-S-S-E-R-S.
I also assume that were no fishing scams.
Yes, we aren't doing any website scams on this. The other general comment I had in a couple of spaces, and I should have marked them down, but I didn't. Both Mr. Hewle and Mr. Gil Martin have asserted that people have died in the quarry, and they've made it very clear, parts of the quarry they're working on that they felt responsible for and parts they haven't. In my recollection, no one has died on the quarry face in the 20 years I'm aware of it, and probably for several years prior to that. So I think before we publish statements by these people that might be incorrect, we ought to at least look into it and say, "On such-and-such a date, someone did die falling off the quarry face," or whatever they're asserting, which was not completely queer. And I think if you look into it, you won't find any deaths, and it would make things clearer for the public. And then I'm done.
You're done. Commissioner Redfield or Commissioner Wright?
I'll just say, it's my recollection, not to contradict, but I do believe that can probably be verified, the death through PPD. I do believe there was a female that fell to her death on the quarry side. Couldn't tell you what year it was, but I do have a pretty positive recollection of that. The other thing I did note, and I appreciate everybody actually finding the pages, I did note, and I did not note them, that there were several typos, I think mostly in the study session element of that. They were minor, being having firsthand knowledge of it, it was pretty easy to decipher what those were, but I think we could just be a little more, hopefully a little more, as Commissioner Berman noted, a little more accurate. Maybe it's the system that isn't picking up some words. But again, being having firsthand knowledge, it was easy for me to figure out what it was, but it was a lot of material to go through, so I didn't take the time to note. But thank you, I appreciate the work.
Nothing from Commissioner Wright? And Commissioner, Vice Chair Ferguson, you had some?
I had a general question. I don't know if we have anywhere a listed rule on this, but August 19th, and particularly that meeting, pretty fresh in the memory. May 20th, pretty hazy. March 18th, six months ago, remembering word-for-word sentences, pretty difficult. I mean, a lot of these are recorded, but I don't want to have to go back and watch the recording to verify the minutes, so I don't know. In the future, we could try to agendize these a little bit closer to when they happened.
Well, I have quite a few edits. Most of them are Scrivener's edits, so what I'm going to do, if the commission is amenable to it, is hand my red line over to staff at the end of this, so I don't have to go through every time. It should say Mr. Hewle instead of the word "he," but I'm going to go through kind of the more substantive edits that I had, and I'm going to start chronologically, so with March 18th. And I will say that as we got to August 19th, I feel like the quality kind of improved and had less of the typos and the disclarities, so...
Could I ask that you reference packet pages too?
I don't have packet pages. I do have each set of minutes printed.
Okay.
So on the March 18th notes, page four of 24, at the top, there's a reference to 1990 Plan, and that should say 1998. At the end of that paragraph, it says she felt that was the source of their deliberation. I think she felt that this question was the source of their deliberation. Page six of 24, it says Chair Hauser asked the public to calm down. And I think it could be rewarded to say Chair Hauser asked the public to limit their outbursts to avoid additional recesses. I did go back to make sure that I didn't ask the public to calm down, so... Packet page 12. There's a sentence that says, "Mr. Gil Martin appreciated the comments, adding that he believed it was a good project. He addressed the comments that they will be trading a toxic waste site," and I don't know what that means, and I don't think he would appreciate that it's written that way either. I don't know what that means. The next sentence down, it says Alisa Guerra, I believe her name is Alicia Guerra. On page 13 of 24, I just clarify a lot of the "they's" to be the commission when it's "us" and the applicant when it's the applicant. Page 15 of 24, it talks about three different reclamation plans, but it doesn't clarify which one each sentence is attributed to, so I went in and I specified whether the sentences were about the proposed plan or the 1998 plan. Page 17 of 24, where the third paragraph down says Chair Hauser thought this was another piece of information, blah, 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 blah. But she wants to be sure that they don't confuse financial feasibility with being financially beneficial. That should just say they don't confuse feasibility with being financially beneficial. And then she stated that the mine that operated for 200 to 300 years was a financial benefit, and it is not the city's responsibility. The pronoun is just confusing. I think the penultimate sentence on that same page should say "surprise mine," not "surprised mine." Again, adding some deets for clarity where needed. Page 21 of 24, this is material. The third to last paragraph said Chair Hauser stated that... I'm not sure what this says. Chair Hauser stated that is the meeting. She stated that there can be no study session as they are too far along from that. That statement came from the city attorney and not from me. And that is it for March 18th. Any questions before I move on to March 20th? Yeah? Oh, okay, sorry. Page 11 of 28, on the May 20th, the third paragraph down. I added the word "benefit" after "economic." I added Mr. Hewle for a lot of the "he's," just so that it was clear. And then there's a sentence that said she referred to the community portion stating she wants to understand why there wasn't a thorough community process. So I think that should say something like she referred to a community outreach on the I had comments on the third paragraph of page 12, especially the sentence that says she wonders if instead of the thought is that they would still be filling the quarry on while going through a development plan process. So that makes it appear that the request was to go through a specific plan process while the quarry reclamation was happening, which is specifically what was not being recommended. So I have edits on that. On page 13, I think for when we talk about the project that Paul Hewle presented, it's important that we clarify that it's a project imagery that's unrelated to the quarry, so that council members who read this know what's being talked about. The second paragraph on page 13. There's a typo on that same page, Commissioner Wright, where the R is missing from your name on the third to last paragraph. I'm not going to go through, like, missing "was" words and stuff, but that's in my red line. Page 14 on the last paragraph. It needs to be clear that blasting is not being recommended in the 1998 Plan, but that it's listed as one of several engineering practices. I had the same comment on page 15 about Fishers versus Fishers. On page 16, it says Chair Hauser appreciated their attendance. I think that should say Mr. Hewle's attendance. Page 22, the last paragraph, where it says she stated that the commission can react to some of the questions they heard, and they will be deliberating. That should say, but they will not be deliberating, because it was a study session. The two sentences later, it should say there is confusion, and is confusing when the number of cubic yards of import keeps changing. Otherwise, it's unclear what's being discussed. And then on page 25 of 28, for the May 20th notes, there's a paragraph, the second paragraph, there's a sentence that says she thinks an import solution, not a no-fill solution, is important as the quarry needs fill, but I don't think that's what was said. So I changed that to she thinks that a no-four and fill solution is important as the quarry needs grading, just to be clear what we're talking about. And then again, changing lots of pronouns in this to be clear as to what's Mr. Hewle, what's the commission, and what's staff. And that is it for the 20th. So that takes us to August 19th. Page 11 of 38, the last sentence, it says Vice Chair Ferguson stated that he doesn't know if it will help take the pressure off the rest of the commission or put more pressure on some of the visual. I don't think that's the word you said.
Commissioners.
Oh, okay. So "visual" should change to commissioners. Page 12, the one, two, three, four. The fifth paragraph down, she wanted to remind everyone to be kind because staff are working for Pacifica. I'm not sure who these people are. I had the same comment as Commissioner Berman on page 24, where it seems like the sentence is not complete, so Chair Hauser stated that each person should have whatever blank. I don't know what that is intended to say, so maybe we can go back to the record and fill that in. Some grammatical changes on page 31 of 38. Page 32 of 38, the fifth paragraph from the bottom is about the findings pertaining to the California Environmental Quality Act, and so this is to clarify... This is just to fix some typos in here that make it unclear why that finding couldn't be made. And then on page 33 of 38, on the second paragraph, to add the words "three-to-one slope" instead of "it," and then instead of "cubic yard edges have been cut down," "had only been cut down." And then on 34, it says Commissioner Wright stated that when it comes down to the actual soil testing, he would be in favor of every X number of loads. Commissioner Wright, I didn't know if you had given some sort of number or if that X was accurate.
It was a very small number.
Can you speak into the microphone? Sorry.
It was a very small number. Refer me to the exact paragraph again, please.
It's the top paragraph on page 34 of 38.
Yeah, it was actually X number.
Okay.
I would prefer that it be every load, but...
Okay. Perfect.
What I did state was X.
Perfect. Okay. And then I had some minor grammatical changes on page 36, which will go to staff. So I appreciate everyone bearing with me, but I think that since this is an appealed public hearing, it's important to be really accurate here. With that, does anyone want to discuss any of the changes, or can we... Go ahead, Commissioner Berman.
Chair Hauser, you mentioned that you were going to provide your red line copy to staff. I have a red line copy, too, so I could include that as well.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we put off approving this till after the changes are incorporated in it, and that we then approve the correct version as opposed to a verbal version.
Before I ask if anyone has a second on that motion, I would like to get clarity from the city attorney as to if we need these minutes to be approved prior to the appeal hearing on the 23rd. I believe that's the case.
I'm going to pass that question on to interim deputy director Stephanie Cervantes.
Thank you. Yeah, so the goal was to have the minutes approved prior to the appeal hearing that's currently scheduled for September 23rd. Commissioner Wright, does that have any bearing on your motion?
I'd still like my motion to stand.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. So just to be clear, before I call for the vote, Commissioner Wright has asked that we continue the approval of the minutes, meaning we would not approve them with the edits that are made tonight, and Commissioner Godwin, you have seconded that motion. Does staff have any comment before we vote on that?
Yeah, so the implication would be that we would attach the draft minutes to the report that's being published for the appeal hearing on the 23rd.
Could the draft minutes have the changes that the four commissioners who had changes requested? Could those be, like, redlined in as draft minutes? If it's part of the motion? So if we approve it?
I'm willing to amend my motion to include the draft minutes.
As redlined, based on the four commissioners?
As redlined, yes.
Okay. Would you like to accept that amendment to your motion and just your second stand?
I would.
Okay. Please vote. That motion passes. All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for bearing with us. So with that, that takes us to designation of liaison to the September 23rd meeting, which is the quarry appeal. I have gotten some clarity that we can have more than one. I have gotten some clarity that we can have more than one liaison. And I, to that point, would like to volunteer myself and also ask if another commissioner will attend with me.
Regardless of being liaison, I plan on attending. If you would like me to have an official position, I'd be willing to, willing to do so.
Would you like to liaise?
I, since we.
Okay.
Coupled on it, yes.
Is anyone vying for the position?
I have a San Mateo County Chamber of Commerce event that evening, so I cannot attend.
Is that okay with everyone? Okay. So thank you, Commissioner Wright. You and I will be the liaisons for the, for the quarry meeting on the 23rd. Is that, are we okay? So moving on to oral communications, this portion of the agenda is available for items, I'm sorry, this portion of the meeting is available for items that are not on the agenda. Speakers will have three minutes to comment. And at this point, I believe I have one oral communications card. Ron McHale.
You might want to check with Cliff too, to see if that's what he was anticipating.
Yes, I will go to Zoom after hearing in the room. Hi, Ron.
Okay. Good evening. You know, Commissioners, my name's Ron McHale, longtime resident in Pacifica, a long, long time. And I did sit up there at one point in time and then, but the place didn't look at all like this when I was up there, I believe. So it's really wonderful. It's in nice shape. Anyway, I'm here, I want to, first, I want to say, you know, you're talking about the minutes here and I, and I remember sometimes when I was on the planning commission and we had these really contentious things that went on and I often wanted to get the planning department to change it to the hours instead of the minutes because basically it was minutes go on forever. So, any rate, I'm here to express my appreciation for the way you voted on the quarry issue, you know, all the land, the fill there. I think you guys did a wonderful job. You were certainly well informed. It went on for so long and you guys got information from every, all around the spectrum, really. And you did a great job and, and I want to thank you for that. And I want to, I'm hoping and I'm trusting, I trust that the council will exercise the same wisdom when they deal with this appeal coming up. So, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. I have another speaker card here for Marge Davis. Was this for oral communications? Fabulous.
I really hadn't prepared anything tonight, but anybody who knows me knows I can talk for three minutes. I mean, but in all, in all seriousness and with the utmost respect, I too wanted to echo the man who spoke before me. I came here tonight to show you that we support you. We really appreciate it. I know a lot of people really appreciated your decision. It was a really tough meeting. I want you to know that people show up to, to support you even when it's not, you know, a big hairy emotional situation. And the people of this community, citizens of this community, voted for a city council to represent them. And they appointed you, and I think they did a really good job with that. And particularly with the five to zero vote, I really hope that they give you the respect and the support and deny the appeal. So again, thank you for your service. I don't know how you all do it. So time consuming. I try and go back and read something in the materials and it's, it's hard even to find it. So, anyway, really utmost respect, gratitude, appreciation. I know I speak for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other oral communication cards, I'm going to go to Zoom. Do we have oral communications?
Yes, Chair, we have two raised hands. Dan S., you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, planning commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. My name is Dan Stedgen. I'm from Pacifica, California. I'm also a former planning commissioner. I'm the appellant, one of the appellants on the quarry. In two days, your oldest minutes will be six months old. I've sat in on 15 cities' planning meetings and probably in the last month, five counties and eight cities, I've never ever seen minutes this old. I know it's not you guys putting them forth, but you have to demand them be produced to you on a timely basis. I spoke to one planning commissioner who said they'd never even been provided a copy of the planning commission bylaws. If you're a planning commissioner and you don't have a copy of the bylaws, ask for them tonight. If not, contact me. I'll get you a copy of the bylaws. It's fairly apparent that a lot of you guys are not familiar with Robert's rules. It would be really useful if, if you kind of gained a base familiarity with that. Our E, the quarry event, several items you were not advised of, two different, two different Caltrans investigations, yes, Caltrans, Native American artifacts adjacent to the quarry in 1997 during the construction of Clara Creek, that a city of Pacifica located intact fishing nets, ceramic pots, and several charcoal fire sites less than 20 feet deep while installing the filters at the Clara Creek Water Treatment Center. There's numerous accounts of those involved with the missions down here spying Native Americans with crosses branded on the forehead to designate they were forced laborers in the quarry. This is a Native American cultural site.
Okay.
I can't believe you guys didn't talk about that. It's almost unexcusable.
Your, your three minutes are up. Thank you for your comment. Do we have additional raised hands?
Chair Hauser, he still has 45 seconds.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
The warning was a one minute warning.
Okay, let's restore the, the time. Dan, I'm very sorry. I misunderstood the beeps.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. And, and if you were to give a countdown time with that, that would be useful also. Also, both the original applicants, Gilmart and Varela, are felons convicted in the last two years for robbing public works officials, including Mohab Nuru and Varela. Gilmart and Porter of Brucology were all convicted. They're barred on, from June 2023 of doing, them and any of their companies of doing any business with the city of San Francisco. They should absolutely be barred doing this.
10 seconds.
Council members and planning commissioners have a fiduciary duty to protect the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for picking it up after I interrupted you unceremoniously. So moving on to the next speaker.
Yes. Cliff Lawrence, you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name's Clifford Lawrence. First, a future thing. There is word now that San Francisco is going to unleash its efforts to force RV motorhomes out of that city of the unhoused. We can expect this is going to have an effect on us. This is hopefully not too late to try to orchestrate with the county for a countywide solution to this problem. This is not a San Francisco problem. It's not a Pacifica problem. It's a countywide problem. It's a baywide problem, and we need to address it in those parameters. Thank you. Otherwise, to the, the topic of the day, I want to thank all of you Commissioners for the four sessions that you spent on the quarry. I respect the efforts you put into that. And at the same time, I have to question how another body with less credentials in terms of their background to understand this material, except for one, can manage this in one session, let alone the timeframe that this is going to take place in. So I want to say that I pray the council does not allow any type of material reversion of the plan that you rejected. It would be.
One minute.
In my appro, in my view, inappropriate and disrespectful. If such a thing happens and the city council wants to consider it, they should refer it back to you. You are the subject experts. And I am so grateful you are there. I thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Is there anyone else?
No more raised hands at this time.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to close oral communications and move on to the consent calendar. I do have speaker cards for the consent calendar. So my understanding, my understanding is that we would take public comment on the consent calendar as a whole? Is that the correct protocol?
That's correct.
Chair Hauser. Fantastic. So with that, I will go in order of cards that I have. Leo Leon, followed by Ayla Homsher.
Good evening, Chair Hauser, planning commissioners and staff.
Pleased to do that.
I want to start tonight by repeating what we as neighbors to this property said two years ago. We are not against a project being built. That said, we want you to know that we do want to ensure that all requirements and approvals related to the project are done in a public hearing and are consistent with all local codes, requirements, and the California Coastal Act. As local residents and neighbors, we also want the public to participate as fully as possible at every stage of the approval process. In reviewing the correspondence from the coastal commission staff to Pacifica planning staff regarding work in the city right of way, the coastal commission staff described it as, quote, constitutes development as defined in the certified LCP and Coastal Act, unquote. Therefore, we believe a coastal development permit is required in the public right of way. We request that you apply the coastal commission recommendations to a coastal development permit for the project and for adjacent work in the city-owned public right of way. We contend that an encroachment permit is not a coastal development permit. We also believe that the slope calculation for the project should extend to and include the slope of the work that's going to be done in the public right of way, and it is actually part of the project and will remain as the driveways for the proposed development. On the issue of administrative coastal development permit, Pacifica's own municipal code, Section 9-44306 Administrative Coastal Development Permit, Section B limitations specifies that the director may not issue an administrative permit if the proposed development is appealable to the coastal commission pursuant to Coastal Act Section 30603, which says in Part 2, developments within 300 feet of the top of a seawall face of any coastal bluff. And this project, I submitted maps, falls well within 300 feet of an ocean-facing coastal bluff, right at the end of Olympian Way public right of way. So it's accessible to you, the public, anybody. We urge you to thoroughly review the files, correspondence and documents, then ask questions and have a discussion. After discussion, we urge you to make a motion to place the TBD Olympian Way Development Project as an agenda item for discussion or consideration at a future meeting. I think this is very important for you to do. I've never seen in over eight years as a planning commissioner and planning chair, an item like this come before on a consent, especially an item involving a coastal development permit in a right of way that is going to become part of the project itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Ayla Homsher, followed by Kathy Gust.
Good evening. I'm Ayla Homsher, and I live next door to the proposed development on Olympian Way. And first, I'd like to thank Brienne, the senior planner, who's been answering a lot of questions and emailing with us back and forth this last week. So thank you so much. There's three things I'd like to cover. First is the lot integrity and landslide potential. The next is the slope, what is the slope percentage? And then the last thing is just, I really need to be enlightened on what the next step is in the process. So first, about the lot integrity and landslide. As you know, the stability integrity of this lot, this, there's been a lot of questions about the landslides and also drainage. And it's been an ongoing discussion among the neighbors. And in fact, drainage was one of the reasons why the city council voted to deny the previous project that came before them. And I am concerned about whether this lot is in a designated landslide area. Mr. O'Connell in some of the reports has stated that the lot is not in a designated landslide area. But however, in 2021, when he filled out a real estate disclosure form that he signed, this was when he was attempting to sell the lot, he indicated that the lot was in a seismic hazard zone and marked yes on the form that it was in a landslide area. So I'm, I'm really not clear. I did include those documents in my submittal that I sent in. So I would like clarification from the planning commission. Is this lot in a seismic hazard zone as indicated by the maps? And if the answer is yes, has that been included in the consideration for approval of this project? Slope, what is the slope percentage for Lot B? There was a calculation for Lot A in the report from the professional land services. However, Lot B was not addressed. And there was an exhibit, A3 dot four, on page 148 of the packet, that said the slope is indicated to be 36.7 percent. So I, it's just, I'm not clear what that is. So if you could clarify the slope for Lot B, that would be helpful. And then my last part is, what is the next step in the process? The recommended action is receive and file. It's not clear to me as a layperson what happens next. So I'd like to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Gust, followed by Don Wood.
Hello, I'm Kathy Gust. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I live at 140 Essex Way, which is on the downslope of this lot. And I am, I have significant concerns regarding the stormwater drainage. The previous design did not adequately address the drainage system with regards to the slope conditions and the potential impact of stormwater drainage on the downslope neighbors. Given the challenges, I hired a geotechnical engineer firm, Kasonic, Harrow and Associates. The engineer did not agree with the drainage system the developers were going to use. He said that the project geotechnical engineer must perform slope stability analysis of the saturated near-surface soils being impacted on the slope. Then, if the stability is okay, determine if the percolation, percolation rates of the expansive clay-like soil that the accumulated stormwater that's being directed into ensure the detention system works. And I'd like to know if that was done, the calculations. Also, with the last design, the developers hired their GeoFrenzic Incorporated for their report. And they stated that the percolation-style system intended for the expansive clay soil bed and the loose soil on this lot is not permitted on the site. So why is it still, the percolation bubble up still there if two of the engineers said that it wasn't permitted? Since this is a new development, I would like to request a peer study by a licensed engineer on the drainage that is proposed now. California has experienced numerous landslides in the recent years due to heavy rains and weather change and more severe winters. Living downslope with such a large-scale development on a lot that's been mapped within a historic occurrence of landslide movement, that's a definite concern. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last card I have up here is Don Wood.
Hello, my name's Don Wood. I'm next door to the project being built. This is a copy of a letter that we sent in back in June to the public comment of Pacifica. And we are writing to express our concerns and raise questions about the proposed development referenced above. We live next door to the proposed development at 131 Olympian Way. We are very concerned about the construction traffic in this development. Where to move forward? This section of Olympian Way directly in front of proposed development is probably the narrowest part of the entire street. We cannot imagine the amount of construction vehicles and equipment that will be blocking our right-of-way to our home during this long process. Olympian Way has been in dire need of street repairs due to congestion and damage to the road from trucks and vehicle traffic. They must use the driveways across the street from us due to a lack of a turnaround at the end of Olympian Way, a dead end. Trucks have used these driveways out of necessity, sometimes getting stuck and blocking the street from traffic. We've even had cranes come in to half-turn trucks around that have been stuck up there. Can you imagine the amount of congestion that would be added to this already everyday problem up there? Any conditions of approval should include requirements to ensure safe road conditions for pedestrian and local traffic and vehicle traffic, and that would ensure further damage by the project along the entire length of Olympian Way is identified and repaired. We also want to, the assurance that this project is in compliance with all applicable local coastal program and Coastal Act requirements. Building two homes in a 75-foot wide may be permissible, but is not in keeping with the current homes on the street. In addition, in the appeal in 2022, there were several questions raised about landslides and drainage issues on this lot. Like to know have these concerns been addressed in this latest proposal? And thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Do we have any folks called in on this item?
Chair, we do have one raised hand.
Okay, let's hear from them.
Dan S., you may go ahead and mute yourself.
Thank you, planning commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. My name is Dan Sedgwick from Pacifica, California. Asking that you move this from the consent calendar tonight and reschedule it. You may or may not be aware, but there's no video available on Zoom tonight, so for you to move it to the itemized agenda, no one online would be able to see any exhibits, et cetera. This is clearly not a consent calendar item. I've never in Pacifica planning history in the last 10 years seen a consent calendar for a development permit, especially in the coastal zone. It's clearly, clearly, an encroachment permit is not a development permit. They're two entirely different things, two entirely different levels of scrutiny intentionally. This is clearly, clearly within 300 feet of an ocean-facing coastal bluff. By punting on this, you are guaranteeing this goes to a Coastal Commission appeal, and you are forfeiting local control input. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
No other raised hands at this time.
Okay, so with that, I will close public comment on the consent, on the consent calendar. Before we start discussing this, this is our first, I believe, Senate Bill 9 project. And some quick Googling tells me that we cannot have public hearings on this item because it's SB 9, despite its being in the coastal zone. I am not an attorney, so I would like staff and the city attorney to please give us some more information.
I can start. Yes, Chair Hauser, that is correct. This is a project that has enacted state housing law, Senate Bill 9. That bill specifically says that projects that qualify through that bill need to be approved ministerially. No public hearing is allowed. The only reason that we are here is because this project is in the coastal zone. The city has approved other projects that have enacted these regulations outside of the coastal zone. We have a handful of applications in the coastal zone, but we have approved a handful outside of the coastal zone. We've gone through the entire process outside of the coastal zone for these types of projects before. Some of them doing just the urban lot split, some of them doing the two-unit development, and some of them doing the combo of both the urban lot split and the two-unit development on each lot, as allowed for the state law.
And I would just like to add that because this is in the coastal zone, the city's interim regulations for SB 9 provide that this would be processed as an administrative CDP, but with further consultation with the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission requested that the city process them as CDPs pending an LCP amendment. And so that's why this item is here before you. Staff has attempted to synthesize the interim regulations that have been adopted by the city with SB 9 and the city's coastal development permit regulations. And that's why this item is before you in this manner tonight.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Does anyone have a motion on the consent calendar? On the consent calendar?
Sounds like, I think the motion in the staff report was to file and receive. Is that correct? For the consent, because we're not approving anything? Or receive and file?
Correct, but typical parlance for approving the consent calendar would be a motion to approve the consent calendar as laid out in the staff report before the commission.
Then I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, I'll let you duke it out. Commissioner Redfield. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Berman and a second from Commissioner Redfield.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Sure.
What is the significance of the motion and the second?
We are approving the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions? I understand fully that this is odd, and I am also baffled by state laws, but this is kind of where we're at.
I am stretched to understand it because I've never seen a coastal development permit done administratively, except when it was the city conducting the work.
I have a number of other. I'd like to understand better what it is we're allowed to consider and what it is we're not allowed to consider before we do any motions.
My understanding from what the city attorney said. Okay. So let's, let's back up. We have a motion and a second on which we will vote in a moment. But my understanding is that based on state law, that this is, that we are not able to have a public hearing or pull the item. This is... Ms. Sharma, yeah, Ms. Sharma, I'm going to defer to you because it's over my head.
It's correct. So the city's interim regulations for SB 9 prohibit...
I understand that, but that, that doesn't mean that I don't have questions about what exactly particular things it is that we are not allowed to consider. Like, just let me give you a couple of examples. Are we prohibited from considering traffic? Are we prohibited from considering safety in terms of, like, ambulance access further up the road? Those are some of the questions that I have, that I'd like to have some more clarity before we move one step further.
So under SB 9, there is a ministerial process whereby these projects are considered. And during that process, there is consideration of these issues. And then there's also consideration of these issues at the building permit stage.
I understand that, but it's before me right now. It's not before the building department. It's not before the ministerial process. You're asking me to say something. And so I'm, I'm just trying to understand what questions it is that I'm allowed to consider in coming to any kind of a decision before I take a vote.
Okay. The purview of the commission in this scenario, which is unusual, as we mentioned, would be the CDP findings only, but not the SB 9 related findings and standards.
Commissioner Redfield.
And just to be clear, under SB 9, an administrative or ministerial CDP is warranted. And it, it essentially voids a public hearing, which would normally be the case under a coastal commission CDP.
Yeah, so I can give a little bit more background. So when the state adopted SB 9, the city adopted the interim guidelines. The interim guidelines say that in the coastal zone, the city will process these projects through an administrative coastal development permit, very similar to how we currently process accessory dwelling units, ADUs. And so the commission has heard those report-outs on ADUs in the coastal zone previously. So that was the intent of the city when the interim guidelines were adopted in 2022. We had not received any applications in the coastal zone enacting SB 9 until more recently. During that review process, California Coastal Commission highlighted for us that we could not process these applications through the administrative coastal development permit process because we don't have an ordinance in place. And so our solution is to process a coastal development permit. However, because of state law, we cannot have a public hearing. So the intent is this is a public meeting in order to approve a coastal development permit that can only be approved through the planning commission.
So are you positive that we are explicitly prohibited from having a public meeting? Because I've read the bill, and it says shall not be required to hold
The state, you're correct, Commissioner Ferguson, state law is permissive on that front, but the city's interim regulations provide that no public, no public hearing is authorized. So that is the, that is, that is the law of the land that is currently in place in Pacifica.
A recorded interim regulation.
That is the policy in place at this point in time.
So we are being asked to follow state law, similar to other...
So this is how the state interprets their law and how it impacts us?
No, it isn't. Is that correct?
The interim guidelines are adopted by city council.
So, so if we don't have a choice, why are we being asked anything?
It is the CDP process, the technical nature of the CDP process listed in the Pacifica Municipal Code. And just to clarify, I know that this is frustrating, but this is a process that staff has been working with the Coastal Commission on to make sure that this is acceptable to them.
I, I understand that from the ministerial side. That's separate and apart from what we're doing here. I'm just a little bit confused as to why we're here if all the decision-making process and all the questions and all of that happens over there.
I, I think the best thing would be to think of it the same way that we process the ADUs, where city, city staff reviews ADU applications. We, for ADUs in the coastal zone, we require a planning, a planning application, those applications, similar to this application, go through an internal review process through staff. The zoning administrator approves the administrative coastal development permit for ADUs, and then the report out comes to this body. So this is, we, this is our attempt to merge what we thought or what the interim guidelines say versus what we have more recently been told by California Coastal Commission staff.
So, in other words, go, go ahead, Commissioner Berman.
Yeah, so if I can understand this in terms that I'm used to. So basically, we're receiving your information and filing it without making a decision. Is that, is that a good layman's view of what you're asking of us?
You're still making a decision because you're approving the consent calendar, but it's, it would be the same as a report out.
Okay.
Commissioner Redfield, did you have a question?
I had one question for legal. I know there are several litigations going on regarding SB 9 to rescind it and change it. This, my assumption if this project is approved at this time going forward, that it would be grandfathered? There would be no... Assuming that if, if the law stays on the books, it's obviously a moot point. If it is...
If, if I may.
Go ahead.
So Commissioner Redfield, the, there has been some litigation at the trial court level in Los Angeles County Superior about the application of SB 9 to charter cities. And that decision is on appeal currently. That decision has no bearing on the lawfulness of SB 9 at this juncture.
And at, at the current, I reviewed that case. And I, I believe that's strictly the charter cities. So it's not affecting general law cities or at this time.
And it's only, it's, that decision at the Los Angeles County Superior Court is binding as to the five litigants charter cities that are part of that lawsuit. But it's on appeal, and so that decision itself is not final. And the decision is based on a findings issue in the legislation. So something that's not difficult to correct theoretically.
And this, just a little more clarity on that. So this is a challenge against the California Constitution that some cities are putting on. Is that only charter cities doing that to, at, to the best of your knowledge?
The charter cities are contending that the law, because of the California Constitution affording certain additional authority to, to charter cities to regulate in their municipal affairs, that they can, the contention is that SB 9 doesn't, or should not apply to them. But Pacifica is a general law city. And so that litigation is not pertinent to the application of SB 9 in Pacifica. And so this is the law of cities that, general law cities, even charter cities, besides the five, that are pursuing that litigation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask another question or two? Assuming that this goes one way or the other, is it still appealable to council? Or is this not, because it's ministerial, it's not appealable to, a ministerial decision is appealable to council?
So the city of Pacifica's municipal code is generous in terms of what items are appealable to the council. So that being said, I will say that the one consequence is if the action, if the consent calendar is approved, there will be a 10-working-day appeal period to the California Coastal Commission. So this will come before the Coastal Commission. If there is an appeal, the council will be in your positions in hearing very similar things.
So I'm sorry, does it go to the Coastal Commission first or the council first?
It would go to the council first. And then if that decision is appealed, it would go to California Coastal Commission. But again, if it goes to the council, they would be in a very similar situation because the appeal would not be able to be heard at a public hearing.
So there are two opportunities for appeal if it's approved. What happens if we don't approve it?
It would be the same options for the applicant.
But we're pretty much, in the minds eye of the city attorney, we're pretty much bound by law to receive the ministerial approval.
So as I mentioned earlier, because SB 9 is a ministerial approval law, the law is pretty clear as to what is authorized, what isn't, and is intended to limit city's discretion. That being said, because of the coastal development permit process that is in the Pacifica Municipal Code, the findings only are something that are subject to your purview as a commission if you choose to discuss that.
I was going to ask about that. So there are required findings, but we can adopt the consent calendar without discussing the findings?
the findings?
I think we have to adopt the consent calendar without discussing the findings. I don't think we can open a public hearing and be compliant with the state law.
You'd be compliant with the state law. You wouldn't be compliant with the interim Pacifica.
Deep as nodding.
Yeah, that's right. So, and again, this is an imperfect scenario until the city can put forward an LCP amendment that recognizes the application of SB Nine in a cleaner way.
It seems to me, though, like there's a basic question as to whether the development in the right-of-way makes it an SB Nine or not. And that's why I also have some trepidation about just having to take your word for it, that it is without discussion, without being able to talk to my fellow commissioners about is it... So we have no discretion over whether it is or is not an SB Nine project that is strictly up to staff?
It is not up to staff. It's based on the state law. The state law has essentially a checklist of what the site needs to have.
But there are interpretations that staff is making and representations, and the right-of-way element is one of those issues.
I'll speak to the right-of-way issue in one moment. So the state law has essentially a checklist. It's either the site meets those requirements or it does not. And then once you determine if your site meets the criteria for SB Nine, there's criteria for that, the development that you're allowed to design to. SB Nine prohibits the city from requiring off-site improvements. So we cannot require sidewalk. We cannot require curb and gutter. The applicant may choose to propose off-site improvements, and that's what has occurred here. So they're doing minimal off-site improvements in order to meet minimum code requirements.
And that's where we went from the 14 feet to the 20-some-odd feet. And that was their willingness to make that improvement for the benefit of Pacificans.
That is correct.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, sorry to bug you with another hypothetical. My understanding of the ADU law is once this lot split is approved under SB Nine, the individual owners of those lots can further split them... Not split them, but put in an ADU. So this process may involve approving four homes on this site as opposed to two, if that's what the future unfolds, and there's nothing the city can do beyond this point to prevent four homes being built on this site.
Yes. So, as I briefly stated previously, so SB Nine, there's essentially three different projects that you can propose under SB Nine. One of them is the urban lot split, which would just split your single-family home into two separate lots. The other is a two-unit development. So you have a single-family lot right now. You can put another unit on there. Or you can do the combo of both, which would include the urban lot split and then two-unit development on each lot. So each single-family lot in Pacifica could accommodate up to four units if it meets the criteria for SB Nine. Because where the parcel is located, because they would... SB Nine does not allow ADUs. If they were to want to propose two-unit developments on this specific project site, they would need to come back to the city to implement two-unit development under SB Nine and comply with the permitting requirements at that time.
Okay, so we get one more review before the third and fourth house that would come in the future, could be built?
Yes, if the applicant wanted to make an additional SB Nine application, they would have to comply with the permitting requirements at that time.
And maybe my math is a little fuzzy, but low density of three to nine units per acre and four units in 7,000-whatever-feet, to me, that's out of compliance with our zoning regulations. So is what I'm hearing from you that SB Nine trumps our zoning regulations?
Does. It applies to single-family zones.
But it's not single-family. It would be four.
I'm saying the law applies to single-family designated zones.
So we have a motion and a second, and I feel like we have a better understanding of state law. So I'm going to call for the vote. So please vote to approve the consent calendar.
I'm waiting for one more vote.
Abstaining.
That motion passes, 5-1 with one abstain.
Okay. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal a decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. Okay. So that takes us to commission communications. Commissioner Godwin?
I learned of something recently that's relevant. The United States Geological Service has a software product called the U.S. Landslide Inventory. And you can input any address in the United States into this and get your landslide risk back. I chose to use this particular site in my own home into that system. And yes, they're both landslide risks, both my houses and this house. If you blow the map out, because it's a software application, you can see a huge percentage of Pacifica has high landslide risk, with the exception of the back of the valley, as you might suspect. But there's a little bit of tsunami risk there. So, yes, there's a landslide risk on this site, but we couldn't have done things like the RENA process if we excluded everywhere with the landslide risk, because virtually all the RENA sites that I checked were landslide risk as well.
Interesting.
So you can do it yourself. Don't take my word for it.
Commissioner Wright?
The United States Geological Service, it's called the U.S. Landslide Inventory. And I can text you a link if you want. Yes, U.S. Landslide Inventory and Susceptibility Map. And you use the interactive map, plug in your home address, and you're off to the races.
Very cool. Commissioner Berman, did you want to go first?
I guess, related to the consent calendar tonight, so it sounded like currently Pacifica's municipal code is not up to date for SB Nine. So what do we need to do to help remedy this, so it's just not a reoccurring issue? Does our current LCP help start the process of us amending the confusion?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Berman. So you are correct. So we do need to do a zoning code amendment and an LCPA. That is currently not on our work plan. We're still looking for an appropriate time to do this due to the projects, the interest that we have on SB Nine in the coastal zone. I think this might be an effort that might be done sooner rather than later. But we do have a few zoning code amendments and LCPAs that staff is processing.
I just want to add, we have Permit Streamlining Act outlines on these SB Nine applications, so that's another reason why pursuing an LCP amendment and doing the legwork of putting together an ordinance with this issue coming to light recently on the ACDP process wasn't possible.
Sorry, I missed your first sentence. Can you restate your first sentence?
So, due to Permit Streamline Act, we have to process these types of applications in a timely fashion. So it did not allow us to pass the application, process the zoning tax amendment and the LCPA, and then bring this forward. We had to continue processing the application.
Okay. Vice Chair Ferguson, did you have a commission communication?
Nope. I was going to push us towards adjournment unless we create a roadmap.
I have a commission communication, which is also a state law-based question. What's going on with the housing element? It was so important, and then it went...
Yeah, that was on my staff communications.
Oh, perfect. Well, then I will close.
Well, I have...
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright?
I'm also wondering where we are in the residential design guideline update. Since we were talking about different processes, are we thinking about doing that anytime soon?
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. This is Brienne Harkoucha, Senior Planner. Currently, we are in the EIR processing, so the admin draft is being prepared for the rezoning program, which it also considers the objective development standards for the sites that are to be rezoned. We're anticipating comments back within the next few weeks for the admin draft.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Staff communications?
Thank you, Chair Hauser. Regarding the housing element, we have been making steady progress with Brienne leading that charge. And we have received comments from the HCD staff on three different iterations of them, and we responded to them today, the third time. And we are hoping that we will get the final thumbs up where we can create a redlined version of the housing element that was adopted by the city council. So we will keep you posted. We're keeping our fingers crossed. And in the meantime, as Brienne just mentioned, the EIR is on its way as well, and we are tracking that to be end of the... Done by the end of the year or early next year, maybe in January. So that's where we are on that. That's all I had. Stephanie has a couple of items.
Yes, I have a few things I did want to mention. So first of all, I was notified that there was a notice that was accidentally sent out for 1080 Valencia Way. Staff had pulled that item from the agenda from today prior to the noticing or legal ads, and so we were under the impression that no notice was sent out. But it would appear that a notice was accidentally sent out. So if anybody has any questions, it is the reason why it was not on the agenda today, because we thought we had pulled everything before the noticing actually occurred. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me directly. We'll figure out how that notice got out. And then secondly, I did want to remind everybody that we do have a public hearing for the local coastal land use plan tomorrow with city council. That meeting does start at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Wright. Yes, here. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
That motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.